And welcome to our board meeting for May. Uh, Ms. Micas, if you have a roll call, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
And Mr. Manley?
Here.
We have a guest from West Monroe High School, Nathan Goldie, who will lead us in our invocation, followed by Mr. Beatty and the Bates on this pledge.
Thank you, Nathan.
Please bow your heads. Definitely, Father. Thank you for everything you've given us, God. Um, thank you for the, the love that you've given us that bridges, uh, the gap created by our own sin, God. Um, thank you for an awesome end to an incredible school year, God, and everything that it entails. And, um, please put your hand on us so the next one can be equally as successful. Thank you for everything that you've given us, God. Uh, put your hand on us and guide us, God, through the trials that you've given us so that we can become more like you. Um, thank you for our parish, city, and state's commitment to our own education, God, and the betterment of such, and, um, and just know, I pray. Amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, young man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, we need approval minutes. From April.
Yeah, I see.
I saw move that we approved the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes.
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 Yes. Any opposed? Okay, we need to approve the agenda for this time. Do we have a motion?
I saw move.
So move.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? None. We need to amend the agenda. We have items two and three that have been added. Have a motion for amending?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right. First item will be special recognitions. Ms. Aliensneed? No, first, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I skipped personnel. We don't have any of that here today. Personnel report. Is that gonna be you? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Really excited to be able to name some new positions today. Uh, they're, they're gonna be new positions, but not new names because you're gonna recognize many of the names. They are people that are in the system now that are moving into a different position. And so, it is my pleasure today to recognize our new personnel supervisor, Ms. Tawana Calhoun. You'll stand. Our new Title I Supervisor, Dr. Carrie Ferguson. Congratulations, Carrie. Our new principal at Sterlington High School, Ms. Dallan Johnson. Our new principal at West Monroe High School, Mr. Dan Lane. New Principal at Ryser Middle School, Mr. DJ Davis. New Principal at Pinecrest Elementary Middle School, Ms. Megan Hicks. Calhoun Elementary, new principal. She served as an interim this past year, Ms. Leslie Sumler. Ryser Elementary Principal. She took over about three or four months ago for us, done an outstanding job, Ms. Tammy Saponero. New Sterlington Elementary Principal, Ms. Cambril Wilks. Our new coordinator, and this is a new position that we have, Coordinator of Public Information, Ms. Tabby Sanye Truxello. And I think that is the list that we have had. Did I leave anyone out? Katie, we named you last time, didn't we? Good. I kept, you kept staring at me like that. Don't do that. So as you can see, uh, Mr. Thompson has been really busy this past month with all of the new appointees. So if you would, uh, board, just bear with me and I'll tell you the positions that will be opened and advertised effective as soon as this meeting is over. We have Good Hope Middle School Principal, Washita Junior High Principal, Sterlington High Assistant Principal, West Monroe High School Assistant Principal, East Washita Middle School Assistant Principals. There'll be two assistants open for that school. Ryser Middle School Assistant Principal, Sterlington Elementary Assistant Principal, Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction for our math team upstairs, East Washita Curriculum Coordinator, Pinecrest Curriculum Coordinator, Ryser Middle Curriculum Coordinator, Calhoun Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, Ryser Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. We have two reading interventionist posi- positions that will be opening, uh, at Bowley, Highland, and Calhoun, a master teacher position at Robinson Elementary, and a Title I Coordinator. Those used to be called the RMCs, Reading Math Coordinators. So, Jason, you're gonna have a fun next month also, I will tell you. But, uh, just wanted to inform our board as to our new appointees and the positions that we will have coming up. Thank you, Mr. Como.
Thank you, Dr. Coker. Mr. Manley, if I fail to ask, do we have any cards for this meeting?
Mr. Como, I got some good news today. We had no cards turned in for the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that information. Now, we'll go to Ms. Alien for special recognitions.
We have a lot to be excited for today, and I'm really happy with, um, ending our school year with all of these great recognitions of students and employees. And hopefully, they're in order and we're gonna get this train leaving. All right, so we are going to begin with a student that we recognized last board meeting. You'll remember, uh, us telling you that she and some of her, um, classmates were headed to New Orleans for a state competition. I'm proud to announce that Kamaya Harris with Washita Parish High School. Kamaya won the Senior Individual Exhibit. She's the state winner, and she will be going to national competition in Maryland in June. We have a couple of high school students that have done so well on their ACT, they couldn't have done any better. They were, earned perfect scores. We're gonna start with Benjamin Forbes with Sterlington High School. Benjamin has earned his perfect score as a sophomore. And our next one, Grace is with giving that wonderful blessing, Nathan Goldie from West Monroe High School. And Nathan is a senior this year, but he did he earned his perfect score as a junior. Our next student is Nashia Puckett from Richwood High School. Come on up, Nashia. Nashia has been awarded the prestigious Gates Scholarship and the President's Volunteer Service Award. The scholarship is awarded for demonstration of leadership and personal success to help awardees reach their maximum potential. The President's Service Award is given for outstanding volunteer service. Our next two students were, um, represented West Washita High School in a film competition, and they were actually, West Washita High School was the only school from northeast Louisiana that was represented in this competition. Um, and I'm gonna call up Austin Matthews with West Washita. Austin was awarded Best Sci-Fi Fantasy Film for his short film, A Tabletop Journey, and the competition is called Film Prize Junior, and it's the South's largest student film festival. And next, we have Kendall Parker, also from West Washita High School. Kendall? Oh, okay. Uh, we knew we might run into that because today was high school testing, but I'm gonna tell you about Kendall's award anyway. Uh, she received the Founder's Circle Award for the short film, Something For Your Mind. Mr. Houseley, the teacher.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
This is the man behind the greatness of what's going on with these kids out there.
Okay, moving on to some outstanding employees. We are going to start with one of our occupational therapists, Renee Lashley. Is Renee here? I didn't hear from Renee, so I think she might have been tied up. She probably is doing OT, and we will actually, um, maybe go visit her, but I'll tell you about her award. Uh, she has been named the Louisiana School Health Service Provider of the Year finalist. So it acknowledges school health service providers who demonstrate superior provision of health services in schools and support the expansion of health services in schools. So we're proud of her. Mr. Jansen May, West Washita High School. Mr. May has been recognized as the 2023 Gordon Reynolds Secondary School Athletic Trainer of the Year. Ms. Brittany Ellis, George Welch Elementary. Come on down. You may recognize Brittany. She is our Elementary Teacher of the Year for this year. She has, um, been named a 2023 semifinalist for Louisiana Teacher of the Year and will be competing at state. Ms. Laney Hodge from Sterlington High School. The Paintst Awards, as they're called, but they're Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, are the highest honors that are bestowed by the United States government specifically for K through 12 teachers. The honorees are chosen to represent their state at national competition. Laney Hodge is the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching 2023 State Finalist. Ms. Jamie Mosley. Jamie is from Ryser Middle School, and she is also a Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching 2023 State Finalist. Both of them will compete in math in their respective levels. I believe will be represented at nationals in the next few months very well. Thank you.
Good deal. Congratulations to all of you, employees as well as students. Thank you, Nathan. Item number two will be discussion of change in timber sales. Mr. Newt Briggs.
Let's take just a brief moment. For those who want to go and do, y'all are welcome to do that.
Please do.
Please do.
See that, buddy? I know.
Okay.
Why am I missing that one?
Yeah. My bill's falling.
I was trying to make sure I'm so proud of you, girl.
I kept noticing that during the meeting, I'm doing like this.
You gotta, you gotta steal the trap of mine, girl. See, baby?
Okay.
It's going out with her, but it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, just carry on.
Board, Mr. Briggs only had two or three of these maps that shows the contours. I gave Mr. McCoy one and one here if you wanna look at the area that we're discussing.
I've seen it, so.
You see it? This breaks.
That's hard to follow.
It is.
That's great. The little map that I had passed out to board members there, uh, commonly known as a topographical map, that, uh, it shows the, uh, shows the steepness and the slopes of the 640 acres that we're talking about down in Blow Luna. A few of the guys, guys, uh, accompanied me down, uh, to the track 'cause if you see something, it's a lot easier to understand rather than just trying to explain it, which I'm probably not very good at. But, uh, over the, over the last couple of months, I've been, been down there several times. And our big problem is, of course, the slopes down there. The machinery they use nowadays, uh, basically is called a, uh, shear-bunch machine. Uh, but working on slopes is recommended, uh, these machines not be used on greater than 17% slope. Uh, safety, for one thing, for the best thing. Trying to shear a tree, it's a one machine that shears a tree and kinda holds the tree in position as it sheared, and it should take it and put it in a particular place. Impossible on a slope. Impossible. So, uh, we've kicked it around. I say we, we have kicked it around. And we just feel like the best thing we need to do is, uh, treat it just like we did one on, uh, Prairie Road. Go in and do a complete timber removal, come back and plant it, and let the, let the future take care of itself. Water is not a short-term venture anyway, but it is a crop. It's just got a lot longer rotation than corn and soybeans and et cetera. But, uh, I don't even know what I was gonna say next. But Sunday afternoon, this past Sunday afternoon, I got my little, uh, instrument, went down there. I wasn't sure about telling somebody it had more than, more than 20% slope. I just, you know, wasn't sure. I didn't wanna say anything unless I knew. So I did. I, I took a, an instrument down there and shot some slopes, uh, on it Sunday afternoon, and they averaged about 25% slope. Uh, some of them were a little more, and of course, some of them were less. But safety, like I said, is the main concern here, and doing a good job of timber harvesting. But that's where we are. We need to, we need to change our, I hate to say it, but we need to change our recommendations to go ahead and, what we call a regeneration cut, which is a nice word for clear cut. But we will regenerate it. And I say we, screwboard, and it'll, it'll look as good or better than the, uh, track out on Prairie Road. We needed to get this thing started so we can put in, if you'll notice on that map, little topo map, I think I highlighted them in orange, I think, a little, little round circles. All right, that's the top of all the slopes out there. That's the, that's the peak of these slopes. It'll give you, uh, altitude and all that kinda stuff, but if you notice the lines that leave those, uh, little orange dots, the closer the lines are together, the steeper the slope is. That's one of the things about these, uh, topo maps. They give you the, they'll give you the, uh, the steepness of these slopes. But anyway, that's reason I passed this out and anybody can, uh, welcome to a copy of it. But we need to get on with this thing. Because we need to go in, a younger friend and I, are gonna put in what we call SMZ zones, that's streamside naming zones. We go in and designate by paint to keep any machinery out of the, out of the creeks. If it's, uh, if it's a flooring creek, it's probably 100 feet from the flooring creek channel, either side of the creek, they will not be in. Uh, there will be no timber operations in that part of the thing. And as you see on these, on this little map, there are a lot of fingers coming in, as some of you well know. And those, those likely will be designated as SMZs also. But there'll be a lot of, uh, timber left on the tracks, uh, far as wildlife, uh, corridors and that kinda stuff, and it protects from the, uh, the, uh, water quality and erosion. So anyway, uh, we just felt like we'd be way better off doing it this way and just revamping our recommendations. Uh, I would like to have done it the other way. Select this and select that. It, it just won't work.
Dude, how many acres are we looking at on clear cut versus what we had thought?
Well, when we, when we put the SMZs in, my smart young friend, we, we have an instrument with us. As we put the SMZs in, it'll record the acreage around the SMZs, and we'll just subtract that acreage from the total acreage, but the whole section is 640.
640 total?
Yes, sir.
Total land?
Yes, sir.
Some will be clear cut and some will be slack cut?
Yes, sir.
We don't know right now how much will be clear cut.
All of them will be clear cut. Yeah, yeah. All of it, to get, to get it over with and back in production.
640 acres will be clear cut.
No. I went out there and looked at it. It's 600 total acres. Probably 100 of it is gonna be with creeks in it, so you're probably gonna cut about 500 acres total, clear cut. But they're gonna go back and replant it. There's no, it's no other way to cut this. A tree is falling. If you don't clear cut it, you're gonna damage other trees anyhow. And the bottom line here, we're gonna get more money out of it by clear cutting it, so we're gonna have more money ahead. But the only way we can cut, either clear cut it or don't cut it. There's no option.
And we won't have a good accurate count of that until we put the SMZs out and calculate the acreage that we're, we're leaving.
The SMZs, we, will be minus about probably 640.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's 100 feet on each side of the creek?
Now, that's a flowing stream. That won't be a, that won't be particularly a small, little mandarin creek, uh, but we will make allowances for that too. You know, we're not gonna work inside those little, those little, even those mandarin creeks. And we won't have a, a good acreage until, like I said, do we do the SMZ, uh, count.
It's in the middle of a hunting club. The hunting club's using it. It's, uh, it's not doing anybody any good like it is right now. If we wait in longer, these trees are gonna get too big and it won't be hard to, we'll get a cut, you know?
Yeah. You can, you can log, you can log a track, you know, downhill, uphill, and a little bit to the side, but you cannot log it on, on a 30-degree slope. Cannot do it.
The reason we were having this discussion is this is the area that we originally had said we would leave hardwood, and they said that we would damage more by trying to manipulate the equipment and the fallen trees. We'd probably wind up losing more than we saved anyway, so.
Yeah, in that, in that sense, absolutely right, because as you, as you turn a, a feller buncher, you cannot, you cannot pick an exact spot. If you try to pick it, uh, you'll you'll not end up well.
Will y'all replant? Do y'all replant with pine or hardwood or both, or how you do it?
Oh.
Pine.
Pine?
Right, that's what we discussed.
Well, that's, that's what
Hardwood is such a slow reproducing product.
Yeah.
Pine is the more
Faster returns. And you notice if you ever went out there, some of us did, and, uh, if you'll notice, that's the way, that's the way it's done in the timber company business generally. Uh, and there is demand for hardwood, you know? Be better off, uh, quicker, quicker return 15 years versus 35, so you just have to, you just have to weigh that, uh, that figure out.
Right. So, board, thanks, Mr. Briggs. We need a motion to regenerate this section.
I saw move.
And a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
All right. One other thing. We did, we did go out and do a little cruise on it the other day, uh, up and down the slopes, and we, we've got a base dollar figure we can hopefully expect. I'm not gonna disclose it.
We'll keep that between the two of us.
Yeah, just, well, three, if I told somebody else.
I'm sorry. I was joking.
We know who they are, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody wants to take a little trip, just holler.
Appreciate you.
Okay.
Thanks much. Item number three, consider cooperative endeavor agreement with innovative network of knowledge. Ms. Micas. Yeah, I have anything on that. Oh, table.
Actually, I would like to ask the board to table this, um, cooperative endeavor agreement. We have gotten into negotiations with INC. Several things have come up, and we just weren't able to come to an agreement before, um, in a tim- timely enough manner to get that to the board for approval today. So I would like to request that be tabled.
Okay, we have one.
So move.
Motion to table. Thank you, thank you. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Micas. Next item, adopt an abolum tax millage for 2023. Ms. Micas.
You have a resolution in your packet for abolum tax millage. Um, I would like to note, the millage is, has not changed from previous years. This is not a roll forward. This is not a reassessment year, so the millage that we're requesting to adopt for the current year is exactly the same as the previous years. 5.18 mills for constitutional, that's parish-wide. 24.15 mills for maintenance and operations, and that is also parish-wide. And 36 mills for the East, uh, East Washita Parish School District, which are the East Washita construction bonds, is what that, um, millage goes to repay. And I do need a, um, roll call vote.
Roll call.
This is continuing the current millage. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We have a motion.
Regina, this is just verifying and continuing the current millage that we currently have. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All three of these millages are the exact same as, as they are and as they were in 2022, and this is for the 2023 tax roll.
Do we have a motion to adopt the abolum tax?
I saw move.
Second.
Any questions from any of you? Okay, and we have a second. Thank you. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
I need a roll call.
Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
And Mr. Como?
Here, yes. Next item, financial report. Ms. Micas. Ending March 31st.
You have in your packet the financial report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. From March thirty-first to the end of the year, we have three more periods in the current fiscal year. We're currently working on a budget amendment for the two thousand twenty-three year. And then quickly following that, we'll have the new budget for the two thousand twenty-four year. If you look on the first page, you'll see at the first column, general fund, we're ending this period with forty million, one hundred thousand in fund balance. Roughly one hundred and twenty-one percent of where we were at this time last year. For the district M and O, we're ending the period with twenty-nine, three hundred and thirty-two, three hundred and ninety-two thousand. Ending the period with a hundred and fourteen percent of where we were at this time last year. Then, of course, we have the sales taxes, debt service, capital projects, that I won't read all of those to you. I always like to call your attention to the last two pages that give you a little more in-depth of the three-year comparison. You have the three-year comparison of revenues and expenditures for the general fund. We're at seventy-nine percent of revenues for the general fund as we, for budgeted revenues. And we're at sixty-seven percent of budgeted expenditures for the general fund for the, for the year. Uh, M and O is, is roughly similar, sixty-five percent of revenues for the current year budget. And we're at seventy percent of expenditures for current budget. And given that we're in the ninth of twelve periods, that's really right where we want to be with our revenues and expenditures on those funds. And then on the last page, you'll see the three-year comparison of fund balance. And these last two pages that we're looking at with the three-year comparison, those are comparisons to the current budget, where the first part are comparisons to the prior year. So that just gives you a couple different, um, outlooks for comparison's sake.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next item will be construction renovation. Mr. Heppel.
Mr. Como, you're finding your handout. Basically, it ought to have been a whole lot of change, but I will go through. Um, West Washita completed, Highland Roof is completed. Uh, the canopies at Sterling and Robinson and Richwood, uh, we have steel up at Robinson and Sterling High School. Uh, Richwood, we got the footings done and, uh, gonna start putting the steel up on that. Uh, security upgrades, we're finalizing some color selections, but we're supposed to start on the, uh, security man trap soon as school's out. Next page, Architect Alliance, uh, Washita High School, uh, the baseball, football, uh, restroom remodel going well. They tore down the old building. Uh, I got some pictures where they're redoing the, the restrooms and all that's going well. The Crosley Roof and Sports Lower are both completed. Uh, the next one is Sterling Middle School with Ross Gregory. Not a whole lot of changes there. We were actually able to do a walkthrough, uh, the last construction meeting we had. And you can actually see where the classrooms are, where the gym is. It's, it's gonna be beautiful. It's big and beautiful. So, uh, it's really looking nice. I did, other thing to change, I did put a request in to energy to have the service go ahead and run for when the transformer gets on site. Electrician can hook that up. Land three architect, Richwood High School. Change orders have been made. We're doing some foundation work to help with that, putting, uh, fabric and crushed rock in that site over there, so. I meant to ride down here this morning, but I didn't have time, Reverend McCoy. Uh, but I was gonna ride down this afternoon to see if they got, they got all the rock in. They were supposed to put the fabric and then put that twelve inches of sand on top of that and get it tested, so.
And they hadn't started as of Monday, so.
You know how the rains are and, uh, it's been raining every day. Uh, they started last week doing that and then it come that rain.
I saw them pouring the footings for the, uh, canopy. I saw that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They got the footing for the canopy.
Stephen, any idea, I know you gave us an update on the canopies, tentative timeline of when Sterlington canopy will be finished?
All of them supposed to be finished for two starts back of, so it's August? Yeah.
Stephen, just one question. Remind me what the change order was on the three canopies?
The change order was?
For twelve thousand seven fifty-two?
We, uh, we did some, the drawings come back where, where we cut out the concrete. Uh, we had, our footings had to be.
Had to be expanded.
So they expanded them, okay.
I saw that. I was wondering why those footings were.
Ex- large.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what the engineers recommended, the TBA, for those, those footings to be bigger than what they were.
Yeah, I saw that. Deeper and wider.
It's my understanding, too, Stephen, once the, uh, canopies are finished at all the schools that we've indicated here, we will be providing the furniture for those, the tables or picnic tables or whatever, so the kids will be able to sit on it?
Yeah.
And that's, that's in the process of being ordered?
That's the phone. And I'm assuming we're talking about picnic tables mainly going?
Yeah, picnic tables, so the students can go out and sit, because that's the main purpose. I wanna make sure we don't have to delay on getting the picnic tables in after the construction is completed. So timing it where it's all coming in about the same time.
Yeah.
Is that kind of our plan?
Stephen, we do with, uh, EOL.
We're on it.
Follow eyes it up. Well, you know.
Last one is Lazenby Associates, where they evaluate bids for treatment plants. And then West Monroe Parking, they should be putting asphalt down on May the twenty-second. They just trying to wait for good weather to get that asphalt down, so.
Well, Stephen, one, one other thing, I would love to get back with you, and I guess Dr. Coker saying bye-bye, so Mr. Geis saying hello on the, uh, the little commons area before that library was at Richwood, that, uh, it was never finished twenty-five years ago. And if we could just go back and re, revisit that, uh, Dr. Coker, so that we can, you know, begin taking a look at what it takes to, uh, to get all of that together.
Okay.
And all the other projects that we kinda have on the, uh, on the list, that's a portion of what, uh, funds we, we, we have.
Right.
I like to, starting probably next week.
Yeah.
I know this week is out of the question board.
Just pick a day and hope we make it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Guys, we need to back up to item number five. I failed to ask for a motion and a second on the financial report. We have a motion and a second to accept the financial report.
I'm so moved that we accept the financial report for March thirty-first.
Thank you. Any, any, any opposition to this? All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go forward. We're gonna go directly to the evaluation of bids. Uh, we'll move item number seven down to the last item of the agenda today.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, board. You'll see in the sheets that you were handed, and we also gave you a new one today. Uh, before you got here, we finalized one. But the first one is the copy paper. We are finding that we are still not getting responses. Paper is still in short supply and it is still much more expensive than it was pre-COVID. But for items thirteen through thirty, the lowest responsive bidder that we are asking permission for is to Jackson Paper Company. Items forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three to economical.
Mr. President, I, I just have a question.
Okay.
Moving forward. I just have, had a thought. I used to work for, for a publishing company. And we used to receive, uh, paper that was on large stacks. And then we had what was called a Seabold cutter. And we would take that paper and we would cut it down to the sizes that we needed it to be. And I used to take a lot of scraps and disseminate it to schools, quite frankly, in the district where I represent now, but I was, uh, not even a parent at the time. And my question is, can we explore at some point what it would cost if we produced not our own, our own paper with a cutter? If we bought the paper and then just cut it down to the size that we needed it for? Because the price of paper is continuously escalating when you start talking about eight and a half by, uh, twelve, uh, eleven, eight and a half by fourteen and so forth. Can we explore that? Because we may be able, in the long run, save an abundance of funds, uh, uh, in that, uh, area.
Reverend McCoy, I know our graphics department is doing that in some areas, that they have the paper and they are in turn cutting it to meet the need of the supply that we don't have. We did see that plain white paper is coming down. The case of it is coming down a little bit, but the supply is being able to have it, the colors, the card stocks and those kinds of things is what no one's having in stock. So, but we're buying them by the truckload, those that we have to have, especially the copy paper. But they are using the cutters that they have to meet that need in some areas already.
All right, board, we need a motion to accept the, or deny the lowest responsive bids for items thirteen through thirty for Jackson Paper and for items forty-one for forty-three for Economical Paper Company. Have a motion?
I so moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you.
All right. The next one is Washita Parish High School parking overlay and in conjunction, the high school's office remodel. I'm, uh, me with conjunction with Stephen are asking permission to award the lowest responsive bidder. That opening is next Tuesday and we will report back to you in the June meeting.
Is it Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday.
What time?
It's at ten and ten-thirty.
Ah, Tuesday. Where?
Here in the office.
Okay.
Is the next item gonna be on the same opening or is it a different?
The number thirty-six twenty-three and thirty-seven twenty-three. Both of those open on the sixteenth. And we will report back to y'all in June if y'all give us permission to award the lowest responsive bid.
Okay. Board, I need a motion to either grant or deny the permission to accept the lowest responsive bids.
I make a motion, we're gonna, uh, accept the lowest possible bid, so.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
The next one is the bathroom remodels, uh, the three bathrooms, Drew, Karolyi, and Riser. And that bid was opened today. And the lowest responsive bidder, as you see on your tab sheet, is Don Leach Construction, that we are seeking your approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
Central Elementary Waste Treatment and Calhoun Elementary, those two are with Lazenby and Associates. Those were open prior. And, uh, Sand Tech are the two lowest responsive bidders for both of those.
Just, just one question on that. Stephen, I know that you've been working on this and maybe Todd's been working on this. How, we missed that one pretty good as far as budgeted amount and what they actually came in with the low bidder. Hundred and ten thousand is what it's looking like on Central's and thirty thousand on the other. Has, have they gone up that much since we've been putting these in?
Dr. Coker, Mr. Jason's also here. He makes him.
Yeah, Jason.
The, the simple was the one that was the biggest difference in breed of beds and we originally estimated the cost left. It was just by walking around on the site, looking at it. They're very similar to plants, exactly the same. It was a little bit more difficult to get the one simple, but the, the big ticket item is the simple one requiring a liftation to pump into the treatment plant that was not included in the region, that we didn't realize until we did the survey and did the analysis. So that's why it's a little bit.
We gotta have it. We ain't gonna work without it. I will buy the bullet.
So we have a motion to accept these two bids.
I'll second. Yeah, I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
And they know it.
All right. Permission to bid?
All right, Mr. Como, with your, uh, permission, we can take these collectively. We have Drew Parking Lot that we put back on the schedule. The surplus vehicles and equipment to sell those through a bid process. The purchase of nine school buses and classroom, um, and restroom upgrades for Sterlington Elementary.
What is this surplus vehicles, equipment? What is it?
Old buses, old vehicles, old tractors.
Are you gonna, you gonna have an auction or what?
No, sir. We'll do sealed bids.
Couple of questions. I know on the bid item number four, the Sterlington restroom site improvements and so forth. We've been working with TBA and the engineer on that. And the reason we're gonna go ahead and give permission to bid now, because that work will be finished prior to our next board meeting and we'll go ahead and bid that once the work's completed. So it won't be a delay in us being able to get, get out there and get the construction site started. And I wanna say, Ms. Wilkes, we're looking at probably right at the start of school. We'll probably work with you on when to start the construction, but it should be somewhere around the first of August. So that way you can work with the contractor and get lined out on getting started.
I also noticed that it's the budget, though, I think, has been changed a little bit. But it was called, we cut a project from the high school to make it okay to do this?
That's correct. He's within his.
There's really a, a less than change of four point two, uh, Regina.
Was that correct?
It's four point two million dollars the last time I met. It's got four million on the sheet here. So four point two is our budget amount. We'll make sure, so we need as much money as we can get.
That's actually four, because we still have like the, uh, football field and that has to come out of this. Finally, so there's still, we went with the estimate of the drop fee, but.
Four P. Okay. And that, that, we cut, we cut a project from the high school, add to the, next year we. The money was okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
What did we cut from the high school, Doc?
Well, there, there are several things that have been cut from the high school. We're still working on that, um, particular project. I know, uh, Ms. Alain Johnson and Bucky and Jason and Greg and several met on that. So I think the overall budget for the high school is around seven-five, something like that. So we're not a hundred percent sure on everything is cut, but they're gonna be within budget when it goes out for bid.
Well, I just thought maybe since you cut it, you knew exactly what it was.
Well, I will, I will say this, uh, when all the smoke settled, we were about eight million over budget at Sterlington High School. On all three Sterlington schools. So we did a lot of cutting. And unfortunately, you know, we got down to within budget on what we thought we could.
You just felt like you needed at the elementary school.
Yeah, we moved some money to the elementary school. That's correct.
Yeah.
I would like to ask about the buses, though. We got nine buses that we're gonna be permission to bid. My question, Wesley, is that sufficient enough to, uh, meet our needs going forward with the old buses rolling off due to their age?
It's a step in the right direction. Um, it will get us at least through the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four year. And y'all would need to look at it after that. This would be two special need buses and seven regular that we're looking at. And I'm also looking at the possibility of getting grants for electric buses. So we have several projects that we're trying to replace those that will come offline.
My main concern, I wanna make sure we stay ahead of the curve on these older buses that'll be rotating off so that we're, you know, don't get ourselves in a bind and not have enough new buses coming online to meet the needs.
Yes, sir. This will fulfill the need at the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to grant permission to bid these four items?
I so moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Thank you. All right, item number seven. Oh, discussion and consideration of motion to go in executive session under the provisions of LS. Oh, discussion and consideration of motion to go into executive session under the provisions of LSA-RES forty-two seventeen A two to discuss correspondence received from the Freedom from Religion Foundation. Do we have a motion?
I saw move, we're going to executive session, discuss this item.
Do we have a second? All right, Ms. Micas, we have a motion and a second, need a roll call vote on this, please? Need a roll call vote, Ms. Micas?
Mr. Como?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
I have a question before a vote.
Okay.
Now, we're going into executive session to discuss
the letters that we received.
Concerning.
Prayer.
What is that, people don't, someone does not want us to be able to pray?
Correct.
In our board meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, yes, sir, I, I'm in favor of going to the executive session to discuss that.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
So with all votes going yes, we will dismiss shortly and go into executive session. Uh, you're free to sit here and chat between yourselves or you can wait and discuss any other items or you may leave, thank you.